Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Roll call, roll call please.
Mayor Virchell?
Here.
District one, Moreset.
Here.
District two, Yakub.
Here.
District three, Bernard.
Here.
District four, Wyland.
Here.
District five, Hoggatt.
Here.
District six, Vanslo.
Here.
Mr. Jensen, Chief Jensen has a announcement for us.
Mr. Mayor, tonight we're going to swear in our newest officer from the Hudson Police Department, Daniel Jentsch, who will come on. This is Gary. Hopefully we've got the oath over here.
There you go. Here. We're going to give him some opportunity this way.
Yep. Right over there.
You ready? I'll just repeat after me. I, Daniel Jentsch.
I, Daniel Jentsch.
Having been appointed to the office of patrol officer for the city of Hudson, having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the office of?
To the office of.
Patrol officer for the city of Hudson.
Patrol officer for the city of Hudson.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of said office.
Discharge the office.
Duties of said office.
Duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Officer Jentsch joined us last week on Monday. He started our department full-time. He comes from us, from Sacre County Sheriff's Department. He's been over there for three years and we're looking forward to getting him out on the street and beginning working. So, congratulations.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
All right.
Get some pictures here. Hold on. Come on, Dan. Come on, Dan.
At this point in our agenda, we look for comments and suggestions from citizens present on issues that are not on the agenda. So if there's anyone here that would like to speak to the common council, now is the time to do it. On any issue that's not on our agenda. Is there anyone that'd like to speak to the council? If not, consent agenda.
To approve the regular meeting minutes of July 20th, 2011. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $325,720.78. A detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. To approve the issuance of 27 regular operators licenses for the period July 6, 2011 to June 30, 2013.
Can you pull those?
To approve the issuance of one temporary operator's license to be used July 21st, 2011 during the art auction at the Phipps Center for the Arts. Additional information regarding operator's licenses is available on request in the clerk's office. To approve the issuance of a taxicab driver's license to Thomas A. Ebbie, 606 Third Street, Hudson, for the period July 6, 2011 to June 30, 2012. To approve the revision to Article 7, Section 7 of the EMS bylaws as submitted regarding a member of Hudson Hospital and clinics. To award the contract for the second and Vine Street intersection project to Uratec ICR Northern US in the amount of $24,990. To accept the Urban Forestry Management Plan service agreements with Blue Stem Forestry Consulting Incorporated as revised by the city attorney and to recommend both engineering provide information regarding the city's access to the software and data for long-term management of the program. To approve the name changes of Grubbs Pizza and Eatery to Teriyaki Cuisine and La Fiesta Mexicana to Rancho Chico Bar and Grill and to direct the city clerk to amend and issue the respective alcohol beverage licenses to reflect the changes upon surrender of the current licenses. To approve the request of Chad and Lisa Witt to erect a fence at 1606 Laurel Avenue contingent on execution of an easement agreement. To approve the request of Lou Nicum to erect a fence at 38 Nicholas Way contingent on execution of an easement agreement. To place on file the quarterly report of the wastewater director, the semi-annual report of the compliance officer, and the June 22nd, 2011 minutes of the St. Croix EMS commission and that is all.
Move for approval. Second.
Wyland?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Moreset?
Yes.
Yakub?
Yes.
Hoggatt?
Yes.
Vanslo?
Yes.
First item from the line, or from the finance committee is application for operator raise license. Mr. Mayor, I recuse myself. Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item five, the information, the use of debit cards, we still are waiting for, he collected some information on our operating system last week, or, yeah, last week, and hopefully we'll have something by next time to make a presentation to you. Item seven is consider fleet replacement plan for St. Croix EMS vehicles. Lori, do you want to take this?
Sure. What we're bringing forward tonight is just the purchase of a Ford Expedition. That was a low quote that came in at $26,099. This vehicle's considered a chase vehicle. We plan to buy it with existing cash reserves. It is part of a several-step process for, for EM, for our fleet replacement plan. We plan to purchase a chase vehicle this year and next year, and we need to look at financing of the purchase of a new ambulance and the remounting of an existing ambulance potentially next year. I mentioned that to you just because it's going to come forward possibly at our next meeting, the finance piece, that is, of the ambulance and the remounting. But tonight, we're just looking at purchase of the chase vehicle, the Ford Expedition. All the equipment that's on our existing chase vehicle will be swapped over to the new one. So I would move that purchase.
Is there a second? Second. Any discussion?
Stay tuned, is what I would.
Not on this one, though.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Review bids and consider awarding contract for Public Works roof replacement. Lori, you want to take that one, too?
Sure. We just got one bid from O'Clare Roofing, and for some reason, here it is. It's in the amount of $34,911. We had put $40,000 in the 2011 capital bond for that. It does include a 15-year warranty. We initially had a couple other companies interested in bidding this project out, given the fact that prevailing wage requirements apply to the project, a couple of them decided not to bid. So, we just have one bid, 15-year warranty, and Tom feels comfortable with it. He's looked into some of their references. So I would move approval of that bid and that we get the project going.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second. Tom, do you have anything else to add? Okay. All right. Anybody have any questions on this?
We had, you said, three or four people came, showed interest, but only one did.
Initially, yeah, and then when it became apparent that it was going to be, that the prevailing wage requirement was going to be applicable, they decided not to.
New legislation has been passed to change that, but at the time, this was.
I believe it's $100,000 now. I believe it's in the threshold.
I thought that that had changed. Okay.
Yeah, it went from, yeah, Catherine, what was it before, 250?
220, 220 or 250? Down to 25.
And the last administration dropped it to 25,000.
And I believe it's at, will be at 100. I think effective July 1st with the new budget.
Okay.
Maybe we could, no.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's see, number 11, we have discussion for option for yard waste disposal. Lori, this is coming out of Public Works again?
Yep. We've had some discussion with Intergovernmental Advisory Board about, you know, long-term solutions for yard waste disposal, and could we come up with a composting solution? That may be a ways down the road, but one thing North Hudson does is they have contracted with Veolia. We're proposing the same thing. As it stands right now with yard waste, residents have to purchase biodegradable bags, they have to purchase tags, they have to call Veolia, tell them how many bags they're going to have out on the curb. And what this option allows residents to do is to opt into the program. It's, the cost is $90 per year. It's billed across a 12-month period, so it works out to be about $750 a month. For that $750 per month, residents will get a 96-gallon container. It's a little bit larger than the existing recycling containers. That container will be picked up weekly. Right now, it's set up to be picked up on Fridays. In addition to that 96-gallon container, they can also have up to 10 bags, 10 of those biodegradable bags, so not the plastic ones, but the paper-bound degradable bags, or 10 bundles of twigs, you know, other types of branches and things from your yard. So 10 of those in addition to the bin. So it can be 10 bags or some combination of, you know, bundles of branches and bags. Forty pounds is the limit on the bundles. If you don't want a bin, you don't have to have one, you can just put the bags out. But in addition to that, the existing program with the bags that you have to tag and you pay per bag, that will still be in effect. You can still use that if you don't generate a large amount. You can also opt in for the program just on a monthly basis if you don't want to be billed for the whole $90, but that will be $20 per month. I think that's pretty much it. They're ready to go right away, and it would just require residents to call Veolia and opt in.
And this doesn't replace our leaf collection?
Does not replace our leaf collection, but we're hoping it will possibly reduce the volume of the leaf collection, because if people do decide to use it, they could plan accordingly.
Well, I'm curious, that's great that it would reduce the volume, but do we have maybe a long-term goal with this to hopefully stop doing collection that way and having residents do, you know, do these bins, or are we going to always offer the, are we planning to always offer the leaf collection and budgeting $40,000 a year still for this, or how are we?
Devin, do you know if we're going to be getting the recycled dollars?
Might stand in the recycling remained in the budget.
Stayed in the budget this year, but we don't know how long it will continue.
Correct.
I mean, it's something we can look at. I think we should, you know, we should see how many people do sign up for this and see what impact it has on the leaf collection.
Given the size of the containers, it's not going to be enough to handle all the yard waste. For my yard, it wouldn't even come close.
But that's why, you could put bags around it.
But if, you know, and I think we just have to try it out and see what happens this fall. But I mean, if you mulch and if you do it gradually, it's possible that it would greatly reduce the amount. Do you bring them to the site now?
Yes, absolutely.
It's a weekly.
Probably 40 bags out of the yard at least.
Got a lot of hillside stuff and.
Will this bring a third truck then around to the city? Would it be a third truck going through the city?
I don't know if it's going to be, Troy, do you know, is it going to be the same truck that's picking up the bags now?
Yes, it'll be the same truck, but we'll not be adding additional trucks. Purpose of this is kind of rowing. Purpose, a lot of people forget to call in. It's a hassle for the customers, that's what we hear a lot of, is they didn't get the tags, didn't get a chance to get the store. I wasn't shown much. I forgot to call in, there's more important things. So we're just trying to make it easier for the customers to kind of set up a program that every Friday, they just have to card out to put the bags on it. They don't have to call, they don't have to run and make sure they get the tags. That's some of the stuff we see, the problem without having a set program for residents.
Would you have an estimate as to, you might not off the top of your head, but I'm just curious, how many customers you would have right now that are using curbside pickup for their yard waste?
We get about 25 to 80 work orders a week, depending on how much. But most of the time, I would say we have a pretty good core of about 30 customers that are every week. You know, I could, I could put addresses out of my, just by sorting the work orders, Stonebine, Laurel, Golf View, Cud. I mean, there's people up in certain areas that we go to every single week that they have to call in and, you know, to help the whole city, the Hammock Creek, we just have a whole bunch of hotspots. And the biggest complaint we always get is they forget to call in, and it's a hassle for them, this program that we're currently having. So we're trying to simplify it and maybe work for everybody just a little bit better and obviously routing it to specific routes, Friday, same truck, I'll be going there. We can start up, you know, start up either Mary, they work towards first, they start on Main and work there, and you'll, we're all just adding a few handful of people that continue to do the regular program.
Thank you.
It sounds like it makes it nice, convenient for those who use it on a regular basis.
Yeah, I think there may be yard waste potentially going into the garbage stream right now that might find its way into the yard waste.
Good point, yeah.
So I would move approval of this plan. It would be simply an addendum to our existing contract.
Is there a second? Second. Any other discussion?
Record. There were four.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next on the agenda, we have a consider a aeration blower replacement energy conservation project for wastewater treatment plant. Jim, is he still here? Yes, he is. I think everybody got it in this packet. I'd like Jim to review this.
Yeah, most of the information is in there, and so this project looks at replacing, to conserve energy, utilizing some new technology, replacing 100 horsepower multi-stage blower with a 50 horsepower single-stage blower. The plans and specs for this, the equipment itself, were sent to three manufacturers with local representation and also offer technical service locally. We received one quote for $58,000. The annual energy savings that's guaranteed is $7,846 for a payback period of 7.4 years. We did receive a grant for the project for the replacement of the equipment for $14,156. That brings the payback period down to 5.6 years. The blower itself and the specifications requires a 90-day trial period for evaluation of the power savings and also the equipment itself to make sure that we're happy with the equipment. After that 90-day trial period, we can purchase the equipment for the stated price, $58,000, and then we can, we will be reimbursed with the grant for the $14,156. So we recommend that we move ahead with this trial period and purchase after the trial period if the equipment is acceptable, utilizing our equipment replacement fund for initial funding and then supplementing that fund with the grant money.
Anyone have any questions?
Move to approve the purchase from APG Neuros for $58,000.
Second. Second. Any discussion?
You're replacing one of four.
One of four.
Right, so what do you think the, how long are the other three going to last before you're going to need to replace them?
Actually, they're all operable. They all work, but it makes no sense to run that equipment when you can pay for new equipment, more efficient equipment. So we want to, we want to purchase a unit to evaluate it, operate it for some period of time, become comfortable with that new technology, and then possibly proceed to replace additional units.
All right.
They all work, although the age of the equipment, as you see, three of them were purchased in 1979 and one was in 1999. They all work, they're fine.
And this will give you spare parts for the other three as well?
Right, we would have spare parts for two of the other units. Also, we could, because the equipment is still in working order, there is a market for used equipment, which we have done in the past with some of our replacement items. So we would pursue that when we're comfortable in absolutely getting rid of it.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under new business, consider rezoning 63-point, oops, update on projects first. Sorry, Dennis, didn't mean to ignore you. I think it's on the table, everyone got a copy of that?
Yeah, it came over today, so hopefully everyone has a copy of it.
Yep.
I'll just touch on the ones that have had activity since last meeting. Second Vine Street was obviously just approved tonight. Construction will be performed on one Sunday, probably the last Sunday in July or one of the first two Sundays in August. The Mill and Overlay project is proceeding. I have a tentative schedule there. Expect to open bids the end of the month and come back at the August 1st meeting with bids on that and alternatives, depending on the funding. Grandview Park storm water improvements, had a survey done today, so we'll get proceeding on the plans and specifications for that. And then lastly, just the one private development project that has any significant activity going on, it was Comfort Suites Hotel, had the sanitary sewer connection done in Center Drive last week, and they're proceeding with building construction, and then they'll be doing the on-site storm sewer improvements and parking lot improvements this month. If anybody had any questions.
Can I ask you what, have you bid any projects on Mill and Overlay and the price of the product? Has it gone up significantly? Have you seen any other municipalities? Are we going to be?
Have seen a couple, and actually, they're both, surprisingly, they're about the same price as last year, and last year, they were surprisingly the same price as the year before. You would expect with the price of oil and other things that they would have increased, but there's a lot of competition.
Okay, good. All right, thank you, Dennis.
Very cool.
Now we get into new business. Consider rezoning 63.8 acre parcel from general business to light industrial district and amend the 2030 master plan, ordinance number 11-11. Mr. Darnold.
Council consideration denied as an ordinance. You have three options essentially. You can suspend the rules, act on the ordinance, which you could either approve or deny the ordinance, or you have first reading and bring the second reading back on July 18th for a second consideration, something you may want to consider in doing that. If there's any particular questions that may be unresolved or you want to answer between, before you act on it, that'd give us time to get answers to questions that you may have in regards to zoning. Committee recommendation is approval of the amendment to the City of Hudson Conferency Plan, 2009, 230 master plan, MAP, land use classification from general commercial to industrial, and amendment to zoning MAP district classification from B2, general business district to I1, light industrial district, is the Plan Commission recommendation.
I will move to suspend the rules.
Is there a second? Second. Roll call.
Bernard?
Don't we have discussion first or not?
Just suspend the rules.
Suspend it, all right.
Moreset?
Yes.
Yakub?
Yes.
Hoggatt?
Yes.
Vanslo?
Yes.
Wyland?
No.
I'll move to adopt ordinance 11-11.
Is there a second? Second. Okay, now discussion.
May I?
Sure.
I've been here quite a while, and I've seen projects come and go, and this is one of the more detailed packets of information from a company that wanted to come to Hudson that I've seen in quite some time, and I appreciate that. Thank you. I also want to point, I understand the residents up there, that as a whole, as a community, lost, I think, three industrial companies in the city of Hudson, as Duralbag, Robin Manufacturing, and I think another one, it slips my mind at this point.
Johnson?
Johnson, maybe? I can't see a reason why we wouldn't welcome these people, this company, into our community in a business park that was outlined as a business park in its envision. So that's why I'm in favor of this.
Now, as far as all the other, what we're talking about tonight is just whether we rezone, and we have some information on the project, but whether we rezone or not, anyone else want to make comments?
I can certainly appreciate the concerns of the residents and those that came tonight and expressed those concerns, and change is always difficult for everyone, no matter what kind of change it is. But I would agree with Randy, the opportunity for redistricting, rezoning, I'm sorry, rezoning this presents a tremendous opportunity for the city, which can only benefit everyone, including the people, I believe, in Heritage Greens. I personally have gone out and walked the area around there and in the industrial park, and after my walk, I firmly believe with the addition of 175 people, it's only going to help property values and also the tax base for the city, and so this is a real good opportunity for us.
I have a question for Denny.
Yes.
Because one comment caught my eye in one of the information sheets. You mentioned that you've been, it was in Plan Commission notes, that you've been encouraging the St. Croix Business Park to?
Well, the St. Croix Business Park for some time has wanted to purchase more property to position ourselves for the expansion of industrial base of the city of Hudson. This parcel, the parcel on the east side of 35 acres, as mentioned before, have been looked at, and we've looked at our parcels in the long term. We have an option to potentially purchase part of the quarry site. Now, that may be 15, 20 years down the road, that's how far we're trying to envision some of these considerations for industrial land. But we don't have a lot of sites that are good potential sites for industrial development. Now, there is a consequence, Mr. Hackle, we didn't mention, about the loss of commercial property. If this commercial property is not, you know, is not developed, it's developed industrial that will put more pressure on the Carmichael Corridor to potentially be developed for commercial development, so keep, you know, keep those issues in mind as you consider this ordinance. So if there's any issues like that, do you want in more detail for us to take, or me to take a look at and bring back a report in two weeks? I'm pleased to do that, but that's, that's your prerogative.
I was looking at the adjacent businesses that we've got. What's adjacent on the other side? I see the buildings, but I remember.
General Motors.
General Motors, and who's the other one on the other corner?
Cardinal.
Valley Carriage?
Cardinal Health.
This is Valley Carriage, this is Cardinal.
What was this one here?
That's GM.
GM, that's right.
Cardinal Class.
I'm trying to remember which way they're around.
So when you look over from the south, you see GM's distribution facility now, with no green space or green buffer, as outlined by Uline.
One of the things I did like about the presentation, I voted against suspending the rules only because I think we discussed it, but anyhow, the, they're looking at building the berm there, and the berm does mostly cut it, you know, set itself aside from the housing development. My concern was more around, you know, middle-of-the-night transport noise, that kind of stuff. We look at their business plan, and it talks about, you know, day operations, not night operations, so we're not going to have trucks running in and out in the middle of the night, which was one of my basic concerns, like the truck stop, you know, you've got 24-hour day movements.
Give me a second to collect my thoughts, because I have a lot of notes over the last
two weeks, and I'm trying to not be overbearing with them, but after receiving a lot of emails and talking with Denny and being a member of Plan Commission and hearing Uline's presentation and to consider the rezoning, I think there's a couple, there's separate concerns here, whether it's that we received, if we rezone, that is traffic, you know, the number of trucks. I think with general, I was trying to weigh out each situation. With general business, I know the expected traffic rate would be 8,000 to 10,000 cars a day on Hanley, so I've had a lot of people with concerns that'd be too much traffic with industrial. I think industrial would bring less traffic as far as, as far as that situation. There is concern, there's been concerns of noise and aesthetics and when it comes to switching that area to industrial. I think if Uline does come into Hudson, we would benefit from it. If we're going to, if we're going to switch to industrial, I would want to see it to be, I would want to see Uline be the company to come in, and I have one main, or a couple main reasons behind that. They've been very specific as to how many trucks per day will be coming in and what hours they'd be coming in, how many, how many would be going out. To answer Nick's question, I was in California the last two weeks, 20 minutes from Ontario, California, so I took a drive to Ontario, California, Uline's plant. It's 750,000 square foot plant, there's 103 docks. It is a beautiful building, well-maintained, nice berm, and in addition to the berm, they had a wall to hide the docks. And in addition to the berm, they had a wall to hide the docks. Yes, it's not in a residential area, but as far as traffic in and out, I sat there for two hours at high time and I saw three trucks leave and one truck come in. I didn't think it was as much of a burden as, as we feel, as residents feel it may be. I think it could be a good benefit to the city of Hudson as far as jobs and as far as residents coming to shop in our shops and eat in our restaurants and possibly build homes, maybe even in Heritage Greens, you know, and develop those developments out more. I think saying that commercial won't build on the other side is, we don't really know, there's no proof to that. And until there's proof to that, you know, I'm in favor of this rezoning.
And I agree with you as far as if a strip mall was to go in there, your traffic value would be much, much higher.
Yes. And I think, I mean, really it was, everything they've written their proposal, better than an aerial view on Google, I went, they didn't know I was coming. It was proof to the pudding, it was a very nice establishment, so.
John, any comments?
Well, I've also contemplated back and forth, I got the emails. I, of course, looking at the hundred and seventy-five jobs, they're high paying jobs. I think it's a decent work environment, they rank very high as an employer. I think would bring a lot of sustained people here to town that I think would also inspire other people that have commercial properties to come in and actually try to get that business because you need people to come to your store and that kind of thing. I do see on the plan here, there is planned commercial district buffer on the north side, it's not huge, but one of the things Uline might consider is at the corner of Hanley and that Rock Street. I don't need readers, by the way. Is there enough room to put some commercial in there, like a corner set of stores? Or it seems like a pretty good chunk of green space there.
I think with, you know, the request is to rezone the entire property. I mean, the answer, yes, John, there probably can be depending on how Uline wants, I mean, if the zoning goes through, that's an yes at this point. There's an yes on development plans and their issues, so let's not get too far in front of, of course, in front of cart here. But the zoning change isn't for part of it to be commercial, zoning change is for it to all be light industrial.
In addition, I think they have done and covered many of their bases, including a landscape plan which does have a berm, trees. It's very well done. I happen to have gone to the Uline facility in Eagan many times to pick up supplies and always felt it to be a nice place to, and I want to pick up. They're extremely friendly, customer service is great, we do business with Uline all the time, so. I think it'd be a great addition to Hudson and I think all the adjacent properties will value greatly from the business and the people as well. And if you didn't notice, they also do a great job at supporting communities in general with other assistance, so I think that's helpful as well. So I too am looking forward to that opportunity.
Can I just say one more thing and I'll stop talking? Denny, when I called Denny today asking him a few more questions, he pointed out something that should have been obvious to me, but I, you know, there's a lot going on. And that is that if we do vote to rezone this and if Uline does choose to continue to come into Hudson, you know, things will still come back to Plan Commission and a lot of the concerns that the residents have been emailing about can be talked about at Plan Commission and worked through at Plan Commission. And another reason why I'm comfortable, that I'm happy about is I sit on Plan Commission and since it does reside in District Two and, you know, I feel comfortable that I'd help to, you know, alleviate some of those concerns sitting there, so.
As part of their landscape plan, they even offered to plant trees on the north side of Hanley Road if requested by the owners, so.
Corey, do you have any comments?
Well, you know, I've talked with people who've been customers of Uline and talked to someone today who was a vendor of theirs and all the comments that I've gotten have just been very positive, that it's a very professionally run organization. So I don't, I don't have concerns there. You know, for a long time we've seen companies going from Wisconsin in the opposite direction.
To Minnesota, yeah.
It's refreshing, it's encouraging to see some, someone like Uline wanting to come here and bring jobs. It's kind of hard to look at it and say, gosh, it'd be nice if someday there were something else there. There's nothing else that's, you know, really on the table and it's an adjacent to an industrial park. It seems like a logical place for it, they seem willing to work with the residents. I don't see any big downsides at this time.
Denny, do you want to make any comments? Any thoughts?
Well, you know, my own personal review is, is that for a number of years, you know, business park as liaison for the St. Craig Business Park. And we look at our sites, this is opportunity to pick up more industrial land. I guess you really need to weigh, you know, is this site better suited for industrial development or commercial development? And that's the ultimate question for tonight.
Is there anyone else on the council wants to make a decision? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, consider amendments to chapter two twenty-five dash twenty-eight and two fifty-five dash two four to allow accessory dwellings in one family and two-family residential districts, ordinance twelve dash ten.
Plan Commission recommends approval of the proposed amendments to two fifty-five, twenty-four and two fifty-five, twenty-eight. This creates accessory building as what's called accessory dwellings, which would be a dwelling which would be permitted above a detached garage in a one or two-family residential district. This issue's been discussed back and forth with the Plan Commission three or four times over a long period of time. More communities are going this to provide the possibility of alternative housing. I took a look at probably ten or twelve different ordinances throughout the United States on this issue. This is not an inexpensive alternative for housing necessarily, from the standpoint that a garage has to be brought into one and two-family code. It's just not, you know, setting up a bed on top of garage, it's not that. I mean, it's much more difficult to do that. So I, it's not like you're going to see a lot of requests of this type. But I think it does provide an opportunity for areas of the community where this may well fit. And the one consideration is, is before this would be allowed, the applicant would have to come for the Plan Commission in a public hearing to get a positive recommendation on a conditional use permit. That recommendation would then go to the common council. At that time, we'd ferret through the ten issues that's listed as far as the standards of this. Plan Commission recommends, you know, this is something that, you know, you may want to try and then after a year or two, you know, review it and see how it's going and at that time we may need to amend it a little bit just to tweak it, to improve it. The Plan Commission recommends approval of ordinance twelve eleven.
I just, I have a couple of comments. This obviously affects mainly majority of downtown. There are a lot of carriage houses that could easily be converted into off-street dwelling or for a separate dwelling unit. With all the challenges we've had with parking already, I see there's a line in here for one off-street parking place. My first concern is the density of housing in the old neighborhoods where we already have off-street parking problems. I like the idea, I think that there's a lot of support for the idea, but it's, you know, how do we balance out the...
Well, there's a couple of conditions. One, you've got to have a lot of nine thousand square feet and there's a lot of lots in the downtown, near downtown, it's not nine thousand square feet. So they're not going to meet that minimum requirement. That was put in there so that we're not squeezing these dwelling units into small lots. The second thing is it has to be above a garage. So if they want to build new, they can. The nine thousand square feet's going to allow sufficient room for your garage above some additional off-street parking. But that's the reason the nine thousand square foot minimum was put in there, was so that you're not getting these in lots so small and it does create a problem as Lee suggests, and I think Lee's observation is very good.
This, and we also not, we're not changing the height restrictions where the height of the garage and the height of the house, all that stuff stays.
No, that'd be a review to the conditional use permit. They can go higher than twenty, twenty feet with conditional use permit now, but the architecture has to meet the architecture of the residential unit. So there is an option already in ordinance that permits them to go higher than twenty feet.
Right, but I think, doesn't it also say they can't go higher than the house too, doesn't it?
Well, you know, you're not likely to let, you know, you're kind of lucky getting a roof pitch that meets the house and so you're not likely going to go over thirty-five feet on a, you know, detached garage, so.
Thank you.
Denny, did this issue come, because I know you said periodically you review the issues, but it's some...
No, no, there is a resident on Orange Street that meets all the criteria that would love to try to do this.
Alright, well I'll move to suspend the rules.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Morsette?
Yes.
Yakub?
Yes.
Hoggit?
Yes.
Vanslow?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Any other discussion or any discussion on this? In addition, is there a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance twelve dash eleven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, adoption of ward plan for the city of Hudson. Mr. Williams.
As I've outlined in my memo, this is something that takes place every ten years after the decennial census. The process starts out at the county level, they determine the boundaries for their now nineteen supervised districts and then they pass it on to the individual municipalities. Some are required to have multiple wards, some are not depending on the size of the municipality. They have prepared over a couple of months' worth of work. They have to take each census block and as I noted in my memo, census blocks can be as small as literally one block. But for example, the area that is bounded on by Vine Street, Cooley, Carmichael and Grandview seventeenth, with the exception of the very north end, that's all one census block. So there's limitations as to what the county can do as far as, they can't divide those census blocks. So it isn't a situation where we can say, well, these three blocks should go here and here. And that's also why you'll see some of these kind of odd shaped, for example, along Cooley Road there. That's all one large census block. So that's why you see some of those shapes. So this is what the county has come up with their wards, or ward designations. The wards then are combined, as you can see in the resolution, into three supervisory districts for that the city of Hudson will have representation at the county level. Two of them are completely in the city and one of them will be most of the city and then a little bit of the town. And that's just the way the population, if the city of Hudson's population would have been just a little bit more, we would, probably would have had three full representatives on the county board. So those are the ward boundaries. The, this was approved originally late May.
Which map are you looking at Devon? Is it this one that the wards?
Correct, the wards. All that we're considering tonight is the wards. The alderman at District is just for discussion to get, that's the next step after this. The city is required by July twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh to have this approved. So if you want more time to look at this, it could be done at the next meeting. We have, the city has sixty days in which to approve or send back an alternate plan. Difficulty in making tweaks to this is if you move thirty-seven people into it, you've got to move approximately thirty-seven people out on the other end and it kind of, you know, is something of a domino effect. So at this point, you know, the county's done a lot of work on this. They did make some changes for us that there was, we found a couple of errors. One of them where Lincoln Lane comes off of Colonial, over off of Cooley there, they had one of the ward boundaries go right through someone's house. Because they're not as familiar with, so those are kind of, they did make some tweaks for us there where we found obvious errors that, you know...
That would not be good for a voting family.
Depends on which side of the house you live on. So this is the, what's up for consideration tonight of Resolution eleven eleven, which outlines each of the wards, the population, what supervisory district they're in and then where each of the wards would, the voting places would be. So that's what's up for consideration tonight.
Mary, go ahead, I think you go first. At least you were talking first.
I had my hand raised too.
She said, I said point.
Why doesn't he do his point of correction or whatever he's about to do before I speak?
Right. You, well, you have A under New Business, eleven eleven, and then you have Resolution.
No, we're under E, under new business.
No, I know, but...
Once ordinance, once a resolution, they're two separate things.
Okay.
Ordinance goes in the ordinance books, resolution is actions of the council.
Thank you. Okay, so as far as the ward mapping goes, I, obviously I'm not going to have a problem with that, the county does what the county does. I have a question on polling places though. I do, I do feel, I'm a little not thrilled with having wards three, four, five, six, seven and eight voting at the Methodist Church. Essentially District Two moved to the Methodist Church. My concerns are, the way we have it laid out now is, I understand the reason, the rationale was that we were overloaded at the government center or that, you know, but that's when we had three thousand voters in District Two. You know, so now we moved a thousand voters out of District Two. So right now, if we, if we add up the people voting at each, in each, in each polling place, we have forty-two, twenty-eight voting at City Hall. Methodist Church becomes sixty-four, twenty-five and the government center is down to forty-two, or two thousand, one hundred and twelve.
Well, first off, those are people, those aren't voters.
Okay.
But still, I understand what you're saying.
Right.
But we just have concerns and it's usually just the November elections where we have the difficulties at the government center.
Right.
But we can't change, obviously can't change polling places.
But now we've kind of leveled out the playing field, right? We've, we've...
Taken some of the voters.
Taken some and moved them, so I would, I've, I've struggled to foresee it being worse there if not getting better.
Well, it will get better, but it is still going to be, for those number of November elections, it's just going to be chaotic. And there's, the reason we thought about doing it is the Methodist Church has a very large community, or the fellowship hall there. There's plenty of room and there's, the thing that we don't have at the community room at the government center is another room to do registration in. And that's what causes the problems, if it was just people voting in there for a November election, it wouldn't be. But you've got that extra area that you need for registration. And we just have not been able to identify anything at the county government center to use for that.
So would the voting location change in November?
No, for...
It would change?
It would be, it would be permanent because we're not going to...
No, but I mean, when's the first time?
Be February.
Okay.
Because we would want to make one notification, February of two thousand and twelve.
Oh, yeah, because I wouldn't want it changing at the presidential.
No, so you would have three, you know, potentially February, April and September.
It would be changed for the presidential.
But it would be, you'd have three elections prior to that.
First one.
Correct.
And then my other question is, it seems to me like in the past you guys have done voter registration. Do we do like, you know, leading up to the presidential race, could we do some Saturday morning voter registration times so that people could come in, get voter registration done, so they're not doing it on election day?
We did, for the two thousand and eight election, we did a substantial, we didn't do any on Saturdays, but we had extended hours here where we brought election workers in specifically do that for about two weeks prior to the election.
Same day registration's still going to be, it's still, okay.
Yeah, they'll still do that.
Because now they're asking for voter ID as well, so it's going to take up more time.
But that was our reasoning behind it, was just, you know, and yes, there will be less people there, but, and it's just that November election where that, that room is just so small with all those people.
But you're talking about changing the voting location permanently.
Correct.
Because of a, one, once every four year.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not comfortable, I'm not, I'm just not comfortable with this.
Well, we get, but we also, we have a, we have a lot of irate people. I mean, it gets, that place gets pretty wild. And that was our concern and that was our response, but you're right, but we can't...
Can they open up like the county board room?
We've discussed that with the county and the only, that's the only room available. If we could find another facility in that area...
It's a big building, they can find it.
I still think that we filtered a thousand people out of there and I just feel like we're pulling a, I'm not even going to say what I was sneaking in my head. I still, I feel like we're just flip flopping the problem and I think the, we like to do that around here, it seems like.
Methodist Church would not be a problem to accommodate the extra people, so that would not be a concern. I mean, there's plenty of room for, there's plenty of room for queuing, for getting the people, because you've got an indoor space for them to queue in, whereas at the government center. But what, here's what, you know, as an alternative, we can leave it the way it is and this can be, you can change the polling places at any time. In fact, we did that in the last ten-year cycle, we added the Methodist Church after the two thousand and...
I just feel like we're moving a lot really fast.
I'd like, can we, yeah, I'd like to leave it and see what happens in November after we've leveled out the playing field. I think we're, you know, I'm not saying you guys, I know you guys know what you're doing and you see it more than me, but I don't, I don't, I think reeducating in, you know, a district of people for something that's a, that's a maybe right now because... know, a district of people for something that's a, that's a maybe right now because of the fact that we leveled things out, can be, we can hold off until we see if it's still a frustration.
And that, and that's your call. The only reason, our only reasoning was, is just because, and again, it is, unfortunately, it's just once every two years that we have to deal with this, but it can just, if, and again, if we could find another room, it, it might help, but we could certainly do that, put, so that would mean that wards three, four, eleven, and twelve then would be at the Government Center.
Yes.
I would like to-
I, I would like to make a motion to, do I, do I do that? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to move wards three and four back to the Government Center for poll, for voting.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Any other discussion?
And then we'll address it when, at that first November.
I'm still not clear on exactly who's all voting at the Government Center.
It'll be-
Same people.
Same as what it's been.
Well, somewhat, there will be a big chunk of what is now District Two that will be going somewhere else.
Yeah, it's gonna depend more on-
But because there'll be District Four.
This new map, right?
If everything goes through, yes.
Not because they're still District Two.
No, but what I'm saying is that's, we're gonna be shifting quite a chunk of people.
This looks quite different than the current map, obviously.
Hold on, the alderman-
Right, but we're not, we're still looking at the ward.
Oh, I'm sure. The ward map.
You guys will have less people changing-
Right.
If we follow this, they'll have less people changing-
Where they vote.
Where they vote.
I, I have another outside of that. We've got, answer this one first and I have another one.
Let's put this one first, then we'll, all in favor of this particular motion to amend? Is that justified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Lee?
Looking at this, we've got Ward Two, which is across the highway, voting at City Hall, and we got the people that are around City Hall voting up in the Methodist Church. I would like to see those swapped, I mean, most of these people down here walk down to vote, yet if we're up in Methodist Church, you don't do that.
But it's, it's how they're combining aldermanic districts is the issue. Because if, we, we'd have to look at the aldermanic side of it if, you know, we want to jump there, but if you're saying that you would like, Ward One and Ward Two, under the new plan, to become Aldermanic District One. So if they were go to, go to the church, that's mean you'd have to move, um, wards five and six, which comes all the way up to Stone Pine then, you'd be moving them to City Hall.
I just thought it was a little silly when all of us moved up to the Methodist Church that we live around City Hall.
But it's just, it's based, I don't disagree with you, but if you move that group of people to the Methodist Church and you're moving the people that live by the Methodist Church down to City Hall, so you can't, you get, we vote by aldermanic districts, Lee, not by wards.
Right, 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 I know that.
So one and two are together.
Yeah.
So if you were gonna move one and two to the church, then you'd be moving five and six, which includes Stone Pine and everything up on the hill by the church, that would then come down to City.
The two, two is across, I see what you're saying.
Right.
Any other discussion on this particular resolution, and then we can talk about-
Yep.
Aldermanic districts if you want, but not trying to rush you, but-
That's for me.
Any other comments?
Can we suspend the rules with this changed in place?
Yep.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
I think we already did that.
Did we?
No.
A second.
Okay. Roll call, roll.
Yaku?
Yes.
Hoggit?
Yes.
Vanslow?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morset?
Yes.
We'll make that change.
Okay. How is there any other discussion?
We have to, we'll be acting on the resolution itself then.
Move to adopt the ward resolution.
Second.
Eleven dash eleven.
Provide as amended.
As amended.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now we can talk about the aldermanic districts.
This is just preliminary discussion, now that the wards have been approved, the county then will implement it, they'll make their, their recommendation, they can finish theirs. Within, I believe it's within sixty days after that, the city then has to develop its district boundaries.
I've got the map up here, and as John did indicate, this looks substantially different, and it's obviously because in 2000, a lot of this wasn't here. I mean, Red Cedar Canyon was just starting and the other two subdivisions out there weren't even started yet, and Beadham Farm was still in the process. So we've had a huge population shift down here. Right now, Aldermanic District Two comes all the way over to here. So I mean, that's, that's really where the shift took place.
What we had to try to do is get the population in the districts as equal as possible, and that's, these configurations based on what the county gave us does that. I know this, like, this odd-shaped thing here is all one census block, that's why we couldn't divide it up and, or why the county couldn't divide it up.
Perfect, yeah, I was thinking-
It does look kind of odd, looks like we're gerrymandering something, but this is all one, one census block here, and this is all one census block here.
You want to explain that again so everybody can understand?
Right. This, the census, when they developed, I don't know how far back it goes, I suppose whenever they developed their computerized plans, designate certain areas as what they call census blocks. It could be whole subdivisions, it can be literally just one block, and it depends on how they set them up. So this area with Cooley as the divider here, everything in green that is north and east of Cooley is all one census block, even with that odd shape. So this, the county doesn't, is not allowed to break that up. That's, it's just not allowable, so this has to become one whole census block. This whole area here is one census block. As I noted, almost the entire, this area here is one census block. So that makes it difficult to, you know, you'd like to have more normal-shaped aldermanic districts and wards, but just because of the way the census blocks are set up. For example, in District Five, the older part of town, those are more three, four blocks in squares.
Yeah, it's easy to count houses and people.
Right. But with the new subdivisions, they just, rather than try to figure out with cul-de-sacs and everything, they just made it all one census block. But this is just for preliminary now, I have to verify, I think we might have to have a public hearing on this, we'll check on that, and then we come back.
Now, Devin, we approved the ward the county sent to us, we sent that back, so in essence, we've agreed so far with what they've done.
Correct.
So what's the change, what would, they're gonna tweak it more after we approved it?
No, no, they already are on board with us.
So this is it?
Well, you still, we still have to have a hearing, we still have to combine the wards into aldermanic districts, and this is the way, doing it this way gets the population as equal as possible.
Okay.
The one concern, and Denny had mentioned it too, was, I think it was Denny at one point, you know, is there a way to make the areas where there's potential growth have a little bit less people, so we don't run into the problem that we ran into between 2000 and 2010? We're somewhat limited that we can do, for example, make a couple districts a couple hundred people smaller, you know, that's maybe too much, but to make it so that the growth can be there, but we have to stay with them as close as we can in equal districts.
But realistically, this is it.
Okay, I'm just gonna ask the question. So District Alderman, Alderperson, District Four is a new district. What happens to Lee?
Based on who's up sitting on the city council, Lee, Lee's home is now in District Five.
I think all three of us are in the same district, aren't we?
No, Randy's, Randy's in this, this group, Randy lives in the goofy part.
Randy's in the green. So what happens to-
I'm in the goofy part.
So, so that fits Randy, we get that, so what happens to Lee though?
Well, what, what's gonna happen is, unfortunately, just the way this worked out, because John's seat won't be up for another year, Lee will-
Lee's seat dissolves.
Well, not Lee's seat, but-
But him, Lee dissolves.
-Lee is being re-districted into another district, just because of the way the, the boundaries-
So there's no election between the two of them?
No, because the seats, the rotation remains the same. Two, three, and four will be up next year with the mayor. One, five, and six will be in the 2013.
So then four will have an open election?
There would be no, there will be no incumbent in District Four. Kathy and I talked, and the seats, even though technically, Lee won't technically live in District Four after the first of the year, he will continue to serve until his term is up.
Okay.
As District Four Alderperson, just because that's the way the cycle works. So the, the new seats here won't take place until after the year-long election.
Could buy an apartment.
In District Four.
Well, in, in reality, you know, if they had changed us a little bit, he would've maybe ended up in three. But again, that's because of the population shift, we only right now have one representative south of the interstate, and that's Mary. And now we have parts of three districts, so I mean, it was inevitable that this was gonna, gonna happen. And the one thing I do want to say is, the county cannot look at where incumbents are.
Right.
That's part of this whole process, because I believe two of the current three-city county supervisors will be in one district now, and I don't remember which two it'll be, but that, it's supposed to be a blind-
Right, unbiased.
You know, not, not worrying about where the incumbents are, and they certainly didn't know where our people were at. So what'll happen now is, if we need to have a public hearing, we'll get that scheduled, and then after that, we bring it back for approval, and then we, we will have to then go through the notification process through the city clerk's office. Our intent is to spend a little bit of money, not a lot, but to send an actual letter to everybody rather than a postcard, and I know that's gonna cost us a little more, but postcards just never seem to get to people, and we will be moving a lot of people as far as where they're voting. So we thought we would do an actual mailing and put it on some bright colored paper-
Important.
-with big letters saying, "Important voting change."
Can they go out with tax statements?
No, because the-
Because they would eliminate renters.
Well, that's right, renters don't, a lot of them don't get utilities. So there'll be a little bit of expense there, but we're gonna have to move money into election this year anyway, obviously, that we weren't planning on, so.
So there's no way of doing it that would tax bills for homeowners and then sorting out?
It would, that would be hard.
Okay.